Recording in progress.
Call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, would you do roll?
Yes, Commissioner Dipdahl.
Here.
Commissioner Cronin. Obviously not here, as her last meeting was last night, excuse me. Commissioner Wire.
Here.
Commissioner Bush.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsey.
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Most need approve, the agenda is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, next is vacancy interviews. Overview and questions of interview process. Jameson, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Welcome back, everyone. To start, I'd like you just to make sure you can get those mics on. You can't see the red light from your point of view, but I'll let you make sure you can, I'll get it, okay. And feel free to turn them on or off, however you are comfortable, so I'll make sure you are familiar with that. Okay, so the process for the interviews tonight will be the same as it was last time. Each applicant's going to start with up to five minutes, provide introductory remarks to the City Commission. Followed by that, the Commission will ask questions, and everyone will have the opportunity to answer each question. Everybody will have, again, two minutes to respond to each question. We'll start out with Mrs. Mary Gales Askin, and we'll move alphabetically, and then we'll alternate that order for each question. Following the conclusion of the questions, public comment will be available for any member of the public wishing to provide comments. And then finally, the Commission has the opportunity to enter into executive session with or without any applicants. Are there any questions before we get started? Thank you again for attending.
So, Mary, would you like to begin?
Sure. I'm Mary Gales Askin, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you again. As you know, I'm a retired journalist, and I just finished drafting the book for East River's 75th anniversary. So, I'm looking for a new challenge, a new opportunity to learn. It's been my experience at diving into things as the best way to learn. I'm a cancer survivor, so I was asked to serve on Avera's IRB to look at all of the clinical studies that are done at all six Avera cancer sites. And it's been a fantastic opportunity for me to learn about current research. And I would welcome the opportunity to learn more about the city of Madison. I mean, we have awesome employees that do amazing things every single day, and most of us don't even know about it. So, I would welcome that opportunity. And I'm also a person who is called to serve. I do not want a seat on the Commission because I want to have positional authority. I do not want a seat on the Commission because I think it's important to be viewed, that I want to be viewed as important in this community. I want a seat on the Commission because I want to serve. I have, I would bring my intelligence, my think outside the box, problem-solving skills to the challenges that we face. And I specifically want to serve the city of Madison because the city of Madison has made me feel welcome since day one. I mean, I have felt like a valued addition to this community since the first day I served at the Madison Daily Leader. So, I would like to return to Madison a little of the gift they've given me. I do do little things in the community. I help with, at the Lake County Museum, I help at the Madison Public Library. For example, over the weekend Lisa wanted some marketing pictures taken, so I took some time out and took some pictures for her because that's what she needed. I am retired, so I have time, and I would like to do something significant with that time, and I think that would be here. The final reason that I applied is a little bit harder to articulate, but I think it's worth putting on the table. And that is, I think it is possible, not guaranteed, but it is possible that in the next few years, we could face some unprecedented challenges. With the cuts that have been made as a result of the new administration in Washington, we could be seeing changes here. So, if the cuts to Medicaid result in our awesome hospital closing, what are we going to do to guarantee that people still have ambulance service here? And how are we going to make sure that awesome building out there gets repurposed so it doesn't just sit there vacant? Hopefully, we won't face challenges like these, but we might, you know? And if we face challenges, I would like to be at the table, having those hard discussions with you. Not a person out in the community complaining about everything you're doing, but someone willing to step up and help make the decisions. So, those are my three reasons. Number one, I need a new challenge. Number two, I really would like to serve the people of this community. And number three, I am willing to be at the table if we face hard decisions.
Thank you. Luke?
Well, I'm going to find it hard to follow up with that one. Mary's wonderful. My name's Luke Hoff. I've been in Madison from 2008 till present. I've been an electrician for the last 13 years and have worked with the community on and off a handful of times. I've done multitudes of projects. Some of the notable projects I've done is Lewis and Clark Regional Water Service out here, the Best Western Hotel Runnings. And I've actually done some work with the city, too. I think I did, I did an upgrade for the generator here over at the city electric division. I guess my main purpose here is to just really try to use my knowledge to bring a new perspective to the table and really just enhance the community as best as I can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
There, Jenny?
Hello again. This feels a bit redundant, like we, didn't we just do this? Except, now Mr. Bush is on the other side, so he's, he's the one that gets a change of pace. Fun for him. So, I'll try not to be too repetitive from what you heard from me last time, but quick recap. Jenny Wolf, I've lived in Madison since 2002. Went to college at DSU, worked at East River Electric for about 10 years. And now, for the last eight or so years, I've worked remotely for a professional consulting firm. And I'm going to be a little bit more self-serving in why I want to do this, and the main reason is like, this stuff is fun for me. I think I said I was a nerd in the last meeting that we had together, and I am such a nerd that not only do I go through the Madison City Commission stuff, but I also watch meetings from other towns and look at their stuff. So, Vermillion and Sioux Falls and Brookings, and of course, during legislative session, I am on there every single day, following what's going on in Pierre. So, this, this kind of stuff is fun for me. But I do also have intentions of doing it from a public service standpoint where I think the experience and the knowledge that I have can be really beneficial to this town and the people of this town that I care a lot about. I've really enjoyed serving on the Planning Commission for, since 2017, and that has given me a lot of perspective on different areas of the things that we see come up in the city. I would, I would be a little bit disappointed, actually, to go off of the Planning Commission, although I know we do have members of the Board of Commissioners who serve as alternates or are present for those meetings, so I might be able to still be involved in that. But I was a little bit, I would have loved to be picked last time, but a silver lining of that was like, okay, I still get to be on the Planning Commission and do that every month instead. So, we'll see what happens, but I really appreciate you hearing from me again and giving me another consideration to join you up front there.
Very good, thank you. City Commission questions, and what, what have you seen that has changed since the last time we went through this process? Because this is new to us, too, having, you know, two replacements and not in the same year. Any thoughts? Mary, would you like to go first?
Maybe. Truthfully, I figured Daniel was going to get chosen. He knocked my socks off, too, when he did the interview. And then I thought that was the end of it, so truthfully, I've been focusing on the East River book. I really don't know what has changed. Sorry.
Luke, your thoughts?
I noticed a few things. I know your outreach to, with your city circle has gone virtual, and I've seen you incorporating a lot of events online with Facebook and everything. And I saw that, I think you guys acknowledged Delon with Miracle City, too. I saw that was a pretty cool achievement. Actually, it was kind of cool to see it through the downtown Madtown when we were there last week, even though it got, caught some rain, but that's a few changes I've seen.
Jenny?
Well, one, one thing that I've seen more concretely is in my application, I referenced some of the things in the strategic plan that, just looking at it, appeared to me that these are things that we made progress on or things that we haven't started on yet. And since then, you've had your working session where the strategic plan was reviewed and Jameson provided an update on where you're at with those initiatives. And it really was eye-opening to see just how much progress had been made in some of those areas. So, I knew that certainly a lot of work had been done, but seeing it laid out in the document as to what initiatives are already complete and which ones are on track was really just a testament to the staff and the amount of work that goes on, not just the city, but the partners at the Chamber Commerce and the MADC. I'm going to have trouble saying it that way as well. I was also very interested to see that in the works is a comprehensive review of some of the zoning ordinances. That's something sitting on the Planning Commission. We've, we've seen, we have certain issues that seem to come up rather frequently, or some things that have come up that we're like, ugh, this is something that we need to look at and rework because it's been a number of years and it might need to be changed. So, I think that'll be a really good initiative to make some progress on is looking at those ordinances as a whole. That's, that's going to be a big benefit.
Very good, thank you. Dan?
Yeah, this is kind of a little bit more of a boilerplate kind of question, but can you describe a time when you had to make a difficult decision or navigate conflict? And maybe what did you learn from it? Luke, do you want to start this one off?
Sure. Difficult time is always making a decision. And a lot of the times, I think that I've learned that making that decision and standing behind it is better than not making a decision at all. So, that would be my big one.
Guess I'm next. I'll throw it back to the Planning Commission if you're not sick about hearing me talk about that. But we've had a number of things come up before the Planning Commission that I might like the project as just a personal preference, but because of the thing that we are tasked with deciding on, there's really not a lot of leeway in the way the ordinances are written that allow us to say yes to it, or conversely, there are things that I really personally wouldn't want this, but based on what we are asked to decide, I'm obligated to say yes to it. Recently, we had a very long meeting around a new development that is being planned out by Classic Corner, where there was some great discussion on concerns about some of the variances that are being looked at and requested there. But because the point in the process was, you know, not fully built out for, for that part, having to stay in that lane and make a decision without having all of the information, that's always a challenge. Because a lot of times, again, at the Planning Commission, I'm sure on the Commissioner's side of things as well, you don't necessarily have the whole project in front of you to make a decision at once. And so, that's, that's a challenge, is making the best decision that you can based on what you're asked to be deciding on as well as what information is provided to you at that time.
Sure, thank you. Mary?
When I lived in Pierre, I was asked to take over a nonprofit organization as Executive Director. I had been serving on the board, and I knew there were problems because we'd gone through three Executive Directors in nine months. You don't do that if the organization is okay. So, I stepped in and I saw very quickly what was happening. We were not in compliance with national standards. We had no credibility with the courts, which we were, you know, mandated to work with. And we had received a very sizable grant, and the funds had been mismanaged. So, the first thing I did is roll up my sleeves and I went to work. I worked to rebuild credibility with the court. I made sure we got the organization in compliance with national standards. I negotiated with the grant agency so that we would have more time in order to do the project that had been funded, even though the funds had already been suspended. But what I did not do, and this was the mistake that I made, is I rolled up my sleeves and I went to work without building consensus around those projects, you know? And as a result, everybody who had loved the first director thought that I was just trying to show how bad he was, and I never informed them that we had problems. And from that, I learned the importance of communicating with people and building consensus. Just, you have to keep people informed, which is why, as a reporter, I was always so passionate about, tell people, tell people, tell people. You have to tell people, tell people, tell people, because believe me, I learned that lesson the hard way.
Perfect, thank you.
Trey?
I'll start with Jenny. It's your turn to go first. Again, kind of another somewhat boilerplate question, but what do you see as the role of a, of an elected official in our city government? What do you think the, the key responsibilities are, what the, the drive or initiative should be taken from a Commissioner?
On a more holistic level, the key responsibility is serving as a voice for all of the citizens, not just Jenny's personal preference or personal opinion, but making sure that the other people who are members of this community, that their wishes are being heard and that their wishes are being considered, that their needs are being evaluated, and that the citizens are getting fair representation. So, you know, that, that's the holistic viewpoint of what the role is. On a more tactical level, it's policymaking, it's being a community advocate, it's being a partner with other community stakeholders and state stakeholders and other communities within South Dakota. It's budget considerations, budget decisions is a, is a big piece of it, making sure that the city finances are being managed appropriately and that, I mean, money, money is oftentimes the number one thing that people in mind, they, I don't want my taxes going up, I don't want my utility rates going up, but I also want to have good infrastructure, and I want to have utilities that work when they're supposed to. And I want to have culture and a good sense of place with parks and arts and quality of life and all those kind of things. So, balancing those kind of needs is, is also another big role of the Commissioner.
Thank you. Mary?
Here, there you go.
I think the primary responsibility of the Commission is the fiscal responsibility for the budget. I mean, ultimately, the buck stops at the Commission as far as where the organi, you know, where the city is financially. But I think the Commission is also responsible for making the tough decisions that need to be made. I mean, somebody has to make the decisions, and there's always pros and cons to be weighed. I mean, we've got $20, do we spend it over here or do we spend it over here? You know, I think somebody has to be making those tough decisions. But I think that the most visible part of being a Commissioner is being the liaison. I mean, being the liaison between the city and the people in the community. So, what, what their concerns are, listen to them and bring them back if it's, if it's relevant to discussions that are taking place. But at the same time, it's reflecting our commu, decisions back into the community. So, if we make a decision here, and we may not feel unanimously about it, but once that decision is made, we all are united in supporting it when it goes out into the community. We defend it, we explain it, and I think we also just need to be present in the community so that we're not just sitting here, but when there's something going on, you know, at the library or downtown, you know, and all that kind of stuff, we're there so that we're approachable, so that people know who we are. So, I think that's basically our responsibility.
Thank you, Mary. Luke?
Yeah, I think as a Commissioner, you have to have a good set of ears, and you have to be able to be that voice for the people. Being clear and having clarity with everyone is an attribute, and I, I kind of want to just reiterate what they've both said, is just being up here and being the best individual and citizen for this city that you can be.
All right, I think we're back to Mary now. As you may know, our Commission, we all have different duties. So, there's public safety, there's public works, there's utilities, and there's finance. Which one of these is most desirable to you and, or most fitting, or you like the most, and, and maybe why?
Okay, I can tell you the one that I would least like to do, and that's finance. I am just not a numbers person. But I think the others I could do to some extent, I mean, the utilities, I just spent three years writing a book. I learned more about the grid and all that kind of stuff than I ever imagined I ever would, and all the balances and stuff. I think I could easily do public safety because for a lot of my years as a journalist, especially when I was in Pierre, I worked very closely with public safety officials. And I also love your police chief, Justin, is amazing, so I don't think I'd have a lot of problems with public safety. But I also think I could do public works because when I was in Pierre, I worked really closely with Brad Lawrence. If you want somebody to train you on how things work, you go to Brad Lawrence. I mean, I knew nothing, and he literally walked me through everything. I mean, he showed me how everything worked, and so I think I could listen and understand. So, as long as it's not finance, I think I'd be okay.
Thank you. Luke?
Well, I'm just going to go ahead and say utilities or public works. I, I've seen so many things in the trades over the last 12 years. I, I have a full understanding of pretty much anything that has to do with construction or really maintaining anything, too. I mean, I was a service electrician for a handful of years as well as now doing new construction, so I would say I'd be up, up my alley to be public works, so.
I believe Commissioner Cronin is the finance Commissioner, so I'm not sure if that part of the job is inherited or not. But that, that honestly would have been my, my answer is the finance Commissioner. My day job is working in spreadsheets and numbers and doing data analysis and market research. So, that fits very nicely with a data nerd like me who loves to break down numbers and information like that. That said, utilities is another one that would appeal to me based on my previous experience working at an electric cooperative. Though I know we've got several members up here who have probably more experience in that, in that area than I do now. So, you know, there's, there's none of them that I would say, oh, I really don't want to do that. They all have their pros and cons, I'm sure, but with the, the finance aspect particularly, that, that was another silver lining, I guess, of having a second shot at this is like, okay, well, that's, that was actually the opening that I would be most interested in serving on.
Very good. What does transparency in local government mean to you? And how would you practice it? And Luke, you're ready? Yep.
Transparency, I, I agree with the city circle, finding your ways to really communicate to the public on their level. You know, government's obviously a difficult place to kind of comprehend as a, as an average citizen. So, really just being able to show people and kind of just completely communicate everything that you're doing with them is kind of how I see transparency, so, thank you.
Jenny?
Well, I think we are extremely fortunate with the level of transparency that our city provides us in terms of publicly broadcasting meetings and having the city circle events. And everybody that is an elected official and works for the city as well is very accessible. So, we have a very fortunate amount of transparency. And I, I think that just means that things that are supposed to be public are public and easily findable. We, we can go on the website and easily find the meeting agendas, the minutes, the, the recordings of, of the meetings that have happened. So, I think that's the, that's the key thing, is if it should be public, it should be public. Now, that said, I know there are certain times where there are things that should not be discussed. You know, we have to be careful about having ex parte conversations regarding certain matters, and so that can be the, the tricky point, right? Even on the Planning Commission, I have people come up to me wanting to discuss certain things, and there are certain things that we are not supposed to discuss outside of the decision-making body. And making sure that you come across as, hey, I'm not trying to keep secrets from you or shut this down, but this is a matter of government policy that there are certain things that we cannot discuss with the public.
Mary?
Yeah, I think those are both excellent answers because that's the truth. I mean, Madison does an incredible job of keeping people informed if they want to be informed. And I think it's also very important that we maintain confidentiality on those issues that we're required to maintain confidentiality on. The only thing that I would add to what's already been said is that I think it's really important that Commissioners be available to the press. Having been in the press for a long time, I can tell you how extremely frustrating it could be at times when there was an issue that you were doing an in-depth story on, and you tried calling a Commissioner, and nobody would take your calls. Nobody wanted to talk to you about it because it was unpopular. So, I think that even if it's an unpopular thing, we really need to give some thought to what we can and cannot say and how we wish to couch our answers. Because, I think Roy is a master of this, by the way, but how you couch your answer, even unpopular decisions can be couched in a way that is respectful. And I think it's really important that we make ourselves available to folks. And if we know it's going to be a tough issue, I think we should spend some time thinking about how we'd answer those tough questions. But not being available, not taking calls, I don't think that's an option.
Yeah, I have one other question I'd like to ask. This one's a little bit more related to the finance side, obviously, with Sarah leaving. Can you describe a time when you had to work with a limited budget or help set financial priorities due to that budget? I believe...
My first, I can't remember.
I believe you'd be first. Yeah, Jenny, sorry about that.
Losing track of what order we're going in here. I mean, can I use my own life as an example? No. Although, if, if you don't ever have to make any tough decisions with your own personal budget, come see me and teach me your ways. But I've been on a number of different nonprofit boards and committees and within my own workplaces, been given money to do certain things. money to do certain things. So I'll use an example of my current role as Vice President of the Madison Area Arts Council. And we are trying to plan ahead for our 2025-26 season. Thank you, by the way, to the City of Madison for helping with our budget. We very much appreciate that. But with the cuts that are coming down the pike, we are being extremely cautious with our planning ahead for the upcoming season. And so that is requiring us to be creative and have to say no to certain things, and really taking a tight look at what things can we spend money on this year and what things are we going to have to say no to. So that's an organization that, we've never had a great surplus. We've always had to run pretty tight, but this year we are running a little tighter. So maybe not being able to do so many concerts, maybe having to scale back on paying our artists is extremely important to us, but maybe saying no to some of those higher-dollar artists that we've had in the past. And maybe finding more people who wish to become members and donate and support our cause. But it's always a balancing act, and this year especially will be an interesting one.
Perfect. Thank you. Mary?
Well, in the long ago days, before I became a journalist, I was in nonprofit management. So I have worked with limited budgets, and I had to do the fundraising, which I can tell you is not fun. But basically, you know, the first thing we would do is, you know, what are the priorities? You know, what things need to be taken care of? So we need to make sure the salaries get taken care of, you know. We need to have some funds in reserve in case, you know, there's some maintenance issues that can't be put off. You know, those were priorities. And then for me, with my nonprofits, the second thing was always public-facing stuff. Anything that was public-facing, so all of our programming and all of that kind of stuff, that was high on my priority list. And, you know, so if we were short of things, we'd do less traveling, less training. The important thing is, what are your priorities, you know, and how much is necessary to maintain those priorities? Once you do that, then the rest of it kind of falls into place. You start seeing what you can and can't do. But know your priorities and put them first.
Perfect. Thank you. Luke?
Every project I have been on is on a budget. So ultimately, keeping these costs down is ultimately always comes down to efficiency, keeping things on track and going as quickly as possible. And I would say as far as budgetary and finance, cutting out unnecessary costs and really just limiting, you know, what, like you said, what's the base, and then what can you do if you have a surplus? So that would kind of be where I put things.
Perfect. Thank you.
Between this meeting and last meeting, all my questions have been asked. So Kelly, if you've got any you have?
Yeah, I also am good there. I guess Dan, Mary?
I don't have anything else for you guys. Thank you.
Do we have any online questions?
We don't have a great way of taking online questions.
Okay.
I would say there's be questions for you guys.
At this point in time, I want to take and thank you all three, you know, for considering being on the Commission again, you know. As I said in the beginning, this is an unusual situation for us. And the first time, you know, this being my 10th year and that first time I've ever had to appoint somebody during, you know, in between. So with that, and that, and everyone else seems to have had their questions answered, there being no public questions, or, and I don't see any public comment, and that, what is the Board's wishes? Do we want to go into exec at this point in time?
Do we have any information for the candidates as far as timelines? I know the last time it was kind of, we just announced it at the meeting. Are we going to try to have a consensus before then and call the candidates, or?
Yeah, right now, the only timeline is that we'd like to have the appointment made at the first meeting in August. Ultimately, if you guys aren't ready that time, you can certainly wait a meeting. If you're ready before that time, we can try to make some kind of announcement either after executive session today or at a future time as well. The only timeline that we have set is that we'd like to have that appointment action made by the first meeting in August. Sorry, can't have more details of that. Up to you guys.
So my next question is going to be, you know, do we want to go into executive session and have the interviewers wait? Or I think it would probably be better for them in that if we go into executive session and... The tricky part is, is that you can't make a motion in executive session, and then we would have to come back out.
You, I wouldn't look for any action tonight. Action isn't on the agenda.
Sounds good.
I mean, you're still in a public meeting, and so once you're done with executive session, you could always choose to come back out and make any statements or whatever you'd like. We wouldn't be having any action tonight. Action would need to be at the next meeting. If you would like us to contact candidates, media, otherwise in between tonight and that August, I think, 4th, is that right?
Fifth.
Fifth, August 5th meeting. We certainly can do that as well, or you can wait until that meeting to make any announcement.
Okay. So with that, under announcements, I'll say that we have our next regular Commission meeting, Monday, August 4th at 5:30 PM. And I really want to thank all three of you again for being here. And that, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session, and then you're free to go at this point.
Motion, we move into executive session?
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so we will move into the conference room.
Recording stopped.
Thank you. Thank you.